Good afternoon, welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education regular business meeting for Monday, February the tenth, two thousand and twenty five at four P M. Good afternoon, welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education regular business meeting for Monday, February the tenth, two thousand and twenty five at four P M. Is there a motion to go into closed session for the purposes as stated on the agenda? Is there a second? All right, thank you. Motion carries, um excuse me, motion given by Ms. Pauline Bruno, second by Ms. Dr. Amy Dahl. Is there a second? All right, thank you. Motion carries, um excuse me, motion given by Ms. Pauline Bruno, second by Ms. Dr. Amy Dahl. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go into closed session. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go into closed session.
Good evening, everyone. Is there a motion to come out of closed session and into open session? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We are now in open session. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to our regular business meeting on February tenth, twenty twenty-five. We're so happy that you're here tonight. We have our call to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Ms. Bruno. There's a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance and inspiration, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Lockwood.
Yes, we have, uh, Ms. Kennedy's here. Just come on in, and we have the pledge of allegiance from a great student from Westmore. So I'll let you introduce him.
Absolutely. This is my wonderful eighth grade student, one of my wonderful eighth grade students, Preston Coward, and he's gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have Sophie McNeil here. She's going to lead us in, or not lead us, but share with us some inspiration.
Good evening. My name is Sophie McNeil, and I'm a fifth grade student at Westmore Elementary. At Westmore, we focus on five core values: perseverance, respect, ownership, unity, and dependability. Tonight, I'm going to open our board meeting by sharing a poem with you about perseverance. When things go wrong, as they sometimes will, when the road you're chugging seems all uphill, when the funds are low and the debts are high, and you want to smile but you have to sigh, when care is pressing you down a bit, rest if you must, but do not quit. Success is failure turned inside out, the silver tint of the clouds of doubt. And you can never tell how close you are, it may be near when it seems so far. So stick to the fight when your hardest hit, it's when things go wrong that you must not quit. Thank you.
And Ms. Davis, would you please leave us, lead us in a moment of silence?
I will. Thank you for both of y'all for helping us with the pledge and with our inspiration. Um, tonight for a moment of silence, I'd like to bring to everyone's attention that we lost a precious and dear lady, Ms. Nora McNeil. She was a twenty-five-year principal at Sand Hills Farm Life, and she had a total of thirty-eight years of service for Moore County Schools. Um, so if you'll just join me for a moment there.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Bachelor, if you'll lead us in the recognitions.
Thank you, Board Chair. First, could we have Preston and Sophia, uh, Sophie, please join Board Member Hensley and Board Member Dahl at the front? As a token of appreciation, we are presenting these students with certificates for leading us in the pledge of allegiance and providing a wonderful inspiration to us all this evening. Amanda and Ralph from Robbins Elementary School, please join Board Member Hensley and Board Member Dahl at the front. Amanda, uh, Mrs. Barco is, and I'm sorry, let me start. Amanda Barco is this month's Engage Inspires to See certified staff honoree for Robbins Elementary School. Mrs. Barco is an outstanding second-grade teacher whose expertise and dedication shine through in her daily instruction. She seamlessly integrates her extensive knowledge into the classroom, enhancing lessons with sign language to provide valuable visual cues. Mrs. Barco adapts skillfully to meet the unique needs of each student, ensuring all have access to the curriculum. Beyond her classroom, she plays a vital leadership role in mentoring new teachers, offering strategic insights for school-wide improvement, and maintaining strong proactive communication with parents. Her contributions make her an invaluable asset to Robbins Elementary School. Ralph Bolden is this month's Engage Inspires to See support staff honoree for Robbins Elementary School. Mr. Bolden, a dedicated custodian, is known for his reliability, unwavering support, and exceptional patience in carrying out his daily responsibilities. No matter the task, he is always ready to lend a helping hand. His diligence and commitment to maintaining a clean, safe, and welcoming environment shine through in every corner of the school. Through his hard work and dedication, Mr. Bolden plays an essential role in the success of our school community. We are truly grateful for all that he does for Robbins Elementary School. Would family members and Principal Robbins please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? Patricia and Lynn from Westmore Elementary School, please join Board Member Hensley and Board Member Dahl at the front. Patricia Gray and Lynn Lewis are this month's Engage Inspires to See certified staff honorees for Westmore Elementary School. Mrs. Gray is an outstanding teacher who inspires and engages students with her passion and dedication. After serving as an instructional assistant for twenty-five years in Moore County, she returned to school to obtain her teaching license. Now, in her first year of leading her very own kindergarten class at Westmore Elementary, she teaches with patience and empathy. She recognizes each student's strengths and encourages curiosity, critical thinking, and creativity. The school and community of Westmore are proud to have Mrs. Gray, who continues to help build confident, motivated, and successful individuals. Nurse Lewis is a compassionate and dedicated servant three schools in Northern Moore. She provides first aid, manages health conditions, and offers comfort to students during illness or injury. More than just attending to physical needs, she ensures a supportive environment where students feel valued and secure. Her deep understanding of medical and emotional needs allows students to focus on their education, confident their health is in expert hands. Nurse Lewis's kindness and expertise make her an invaluable asset to the Westmore Elementary community and beyond. Would family members and Principal Kennedy please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? Kaylee from Union Ponds High School and Nicole from Northmore High School, please join Board Member Hensley and Board Member Dahl at the front. Kaylee was January's Engage Inspires to See student honoree. A senior at Union Ponds High School, Kaylee exemplifies dedication to academics, leadership, and service. With a four-point-six GPA, she serves as president of the National Honor Society, core leader for student-to-student, and class secretary, and participates in band. She is also a three-sport athlete competing in tennis, swimming, and track and field. In her spare time, she volunteers as a prosecutor for Moore County teen court and is a member of the Moore County mock trial team. Both in school and in the community, Kaylee embodies what it means to be Viking strong. Nicole is this month's Engage Inspires to See student honoree. As a senior at Northmore, North, uh, Nicole consistently demonstrates the Mustang way: respect, responsibility, and integrity in all that she does. She is an integral part of our campus and well-regarded by peers and faculty alike. Nicole plays on the Lady Mustangs basketball team and has served on the Northmore yearbook staff. She is also part of Northmore's recently revived Teacher Cadet Program. After completing Level One of the Teacher Cadet course, Nicole felt called to the teaching profession. Currently in Level Two, she plans to pursue a degree/education after graduation, aiming to give back to her community as a teacher. Would family members, Principal McCormick, and Principal Patterson please stand as we recognize our honorees? And tonight, we have a few additional recognitions. First, would our newly certified, national board certified teachers please join Board Member Hensley and Board Member Dahl at the front? And we're missing a couple people tonight, but I'll still read their names, uh, in recognition. Courtney Howell from Cranes Creek Middle School, John Kidd from Northmore High School, Taylor Murphy from West Pond Elementary School, and Jadrian Riley from Aberdeen Elementary School recently earned their national board certification. Teachers who achieve this recognition are regarded as among the best in the nation. This year, Moore County Schools celebrates four teachers who achieved initial certification. The certification process can take up to five years to complete and includes a detail-oriented portfolio with artifacts, student samples, and analysis. Additionally, certified teachers must pass a test that demonstrates their depth of content knowledge. Would family members please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? Now, we would like to call out, uh, all those who renewed their certification this year to come up to be recognized. We should have several recertifications. I think we're missing a few here, but we'll still read everyone's names. Elena Aponte from Elise Middle School, Catherine Blake from Sand Hills Farm Life Elementary School, Kelly Knup from Pinehurst Elementary School, Sarah Chapman and Lane Street from the Ed Center, Holly Curry and Kristen Garner from Connect Academy, and Stephanie Kern from Elise Middle School recently renewed their national board certification. The initial national board certification is valid for five years. After that, teachers must undergo a renewal process. Teachers create and submit a profile of professional growth, which demonstrates how the teacher's practices continue to align with the five core propositions of the national board standards. This year, we are excited to have eight teachers who have achieved recertification. Would family members please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees? And at this time, recognitions portion is complete for tonight. I'll turn it back over to our Board Chair Calcut.
Thank you very much. Let's give everybody another round of applause. And at this time, we'll take a short recess. Thank you. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting back into session. At this time, we're at Item 4, Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Dr. Dahl. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Bruno. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I didn't say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. And Ms. Davis, at this time, we have one speaker signed up to speak. Would you please call those speakers to the podium?
Mr. Mizziak, you can come on up, please, sir.
I'm going to admit, I tend to worry. The picture that is in the pilot there haunts me. We've all probably seen a car pass a stopped school bus. About 15 years ago, in the district I grew up in, a young girl, probably about the age of that girl, was crossing in front of a bus, was hit by a car, and killed. The district changed their policy so that kids being dropped off by a bus were put in a position that they didn't have to cross in front of the bus. I understand it's a logistical problem. I'm sure it'll cost money to change the policy, but how much is even one child's life worth? Okay? One more thing I heard earlier here, it was a little disturbing. There was one nurse who served three different schools. Thank you.
I think we can keep going here. At this time, we're at Item 6, Board Action. Dr. Locklear, I'd like to hand it over to you for a brief summary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the first Board Action item is the 2025-2026 High School Course Guide. Any changes and revisions that occurred from this year's course guide the Board is asked to approve. This does come with my recommendation. We reviewed those changes at the Boards' Work Session last week. Certainly happy to answer any additional questions the Board may have.
Is there a motion to approve the revisions to the Moore County Schools High School Course Guide? Is there a motion to approve? All right. Is there a second? All right. Motion by Mr. Benway, second by Ms. Bruno. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Calcut, Ms. Chair. I got it. Can we just go through the presentation real quick so the public has an idea of what we're voting on?
Okay.
And then if any Board members have any comments, you know, good or bad, they could just make them.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gephardt.
You're welcome. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Locklear, members of the Board. We always do a high school course guide in order to help guide our students and families in making the best selection. This is a comprehensive academic guide which our counselors use to sit down with our students to ensure that they are taking courses that they are indeed interested in and allows them with multiple opportunities to ensure that they are moving forward in their high school career. When we look at changes, there were not a lot of changes this year. One of the biggest did occur with our new arts standard courses study, which are being in installation stage at this point in time, but they will be new arts courses for '25-'26. The biggest change with these is in our band and chorus. They have changed the name from beginning to now allow two levels, which is novice and developing. So for vocal music, orchestra, and band, we now have a novice so that a student coming into the high school could begin a band program, and then developing for a student who might have entered our middle school and not necessarily had all three years of band. We still have our second level of that course, which is intermediate. We then have accomplished, and again, this was a change in name only with the new standards. It went from proficient, which is what it is currently, to accomplished. The advanced level stayed the same. I will note that accomplished and advanced courses, advanced arts courses are honors-level coursework. Another few changes in our Career and Technical Education Program. They removed the financial planning because we have a robust social studies class named Economic and Personal Financial that is required. So this allows all of our students that opportunity to have career planning, to have financial planning, understand a budget, understand how to write a check, and all of those things that are so critical for our students as they enter college and the workforce. We have added Family and Consumer Science and Hospitality and Tourism, 1 and 2 are now a new course at Pinecrest High School. The change that has come about through the state is with JROTC. Our JROTC courses will now be housed under the Career and Technical Education Framework, and that will allow students in JROTC 3, Level 3, to have a credentialing experience if they so choose. So big changes there. The one thing that we did change is we looked at a revision to the social studies and moved it to an English class. So we moved the Bible as History course to an English class. We are hoping this will be a great English elective, and we're trying to be a little forward-thinking there with hopefully some new standards curriculums that will not be impacted until '26-'27. Then, when we look at an additional course, which I think is going to be a phenomenal opportunity for our high school kiddos, is the Leadership Development. This is offered at Pinecrest and Union Pines High School. They have the personnel in able to offer this class, but this class looks at grades 10 through 12 and looking at opportunities to help develop their leadership skills, giving them opportunities within the school day to study and analyze leadership throughout history and really develop a style of leadership and be a very sponsored part of that school to make some critical decisions. So we're excited to be able to offer that course. We now have, with our format online that is front-facing, we have added a special spot for the Connect Virtual Academy so that those families, because their course offerings are a little different than those of our traditional high schools, those families will have a spot that they are able to go to and click and see exactly what math courses, what history courses, what electives they offer, because some of their electives are through the North Carolina Virtual Public High School, and we want to make sure families are aware of those explicit classes that kids can take through that opportunity. The other addition to our front-facing course guide is the Moore County Innovative High School. We have added a selection of that that will outline their coursework for their freshman and sophomore year. Remember, there'll be advanced coursework in their freshman and sophomore year that will allow them to complete their high school graduation credits in order then to move over to our community college opportunities and experiences.
Okay, just a question. And they access this from the Moore County Schools webpage under Parents?
Actually, it's under Curriculum and Instruction, and I think it is also, I think it's housed in multiple places, but if Cindy were to click on it, and it's right now still in draft form until we vote on it, it would be under the Curriculum and Instruction, and it's the High School Course Guide. Very friendly format, very friendly layout. And I just want to make this piece, this is an instrumental piece with our counselors. We could not have the robust planning. So if I was a freshman, I'm going to get the outline of courses that I am eligible to take as a freshman. As a sophomore, they have a sheet for that that gives me all of my options, but this allows me to have individualized counseling with my counselor, so the student can sit down and really they can map out a career path that that student is engaging in.
I really like the accessibility for the parents and the students and other interested, you know, folks. Is there, are there any other discussion points? Board members? All right. Seeing no further discussion, do we have a motion to approve the revisions to the Moore?
Do you have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
To do that?
Okay, sir. Yep. So at this time, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the revisions to the Moore County Schools High School Course Guide, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right.
Item D, Dr. Calcut, Madam Chair. Approval Arts Education Proficiency Diploma Endorsement Extracurricular Activities List. As the Board may recall, at last week's Work Session, what the Board is required to do per State Board Policy is to require the extracurricular activities list that would allow a student to get this endorsement on their diploma. Since we had a request to review the other document, I think, Donna, if you wouldn't mind very briefly, just giving an overview of what you presented Monday, and then there was also another question about how these students would be given recognition at graduation ceremonies, and Dr. Metcalf can share the recommendation from our high school principals. Ms. Gephardt?
This is very exciting for us, having the arts diploma endorsement. This is an endorsement seal that will go, that can go on their diploma. This is under State Board of Education Policy Grad 007, and it outlines the specifics that are required for a student to receive this diploma seal. First, the student must take a minimum of four arts courses. They do not have to be consecutive. It could be a band, a chorus, and then two theatres, but they must have a minimum of four. Within those, each of those classes, they must maintain and have a B in all of those classes, so it's not an average of all of those. They must make a B in each of those four courses. But what is really exciting is they're wanting to grow our students, and they have given the opportunity to have 40 extracurricular hours that are arts-related, but the piece of this extracurricular 40 hours, the activities must be endorsed by our local board. So you will see that we, in the document that Cindy can go in and pull up on the arts activities, we've included definitely band, which would be under your music. We've included dance, even though we do not have dance as a course. We do have a lot of students that are in our other, like in theatre arts, but they also are in a dance troupe. We have theatre, and we have the visual arts. So we've really, working with our teacher leaders in the arts, we have brainstormed a lot of different opportunities to provide our kids with great extracurricular activities to meet that 40 hours. And then we have also left open with the last line saying that at cultural arts, we might have a neat opportunity that comes about, and the student may come and say, hey, I'd really like to do this, can I count that towards my 40 hours? So we definitely may have additional events, but we've got a very exclusive list, and the key to this is they cannot be anything the student receives a grade for. This has to be all in addition to, and the 40 hours can be over the four-year period from the time the kid enters 9th grade until they graduate, and some of that is for our students to make sure there's equitable opportunities for all students who may not have opportunities to stay after school, or who might be those wonderful athletes who do not have any extra time, as you heard the young lady who does three different athletic events. So this really is a well-rounded opportunity to ensure our kids can meet that endorsement that want to meet that endorsement and have the great experiences that our arts programs provide.
Yes, we're very excited about this, but I did speak with the principals. I know there was some question about how do we honor the students. I do want to remind the Board that this is new to us, new to the state, but it is the seventh endorsement that students can earn. It's not the first, it's the seventh. Many of our students earn more than one. Our high school principal's recommendation is that we honor the students who earn this in the same way we do the other six who may earn them in other areas. That's a seal that goes on their diploma. It's recognition in the graduation booklet of the program at graduation, and then at their honors ceremonies, many of them have, you know, award ceremonies and such, they recognize the students at those as well. There was a question about can we give them a cord? I think we have 13 different cords that students can earn. One of them is an Arts Honor Society, which actually is a much higher standard than this is in particular. So the high school principals really thought the best way to honor their students with this is the same way they do with the other six endorsements.
All right. Is there a motion that we approve the Arts Education Proficiency Diploma Endorsement Extracurricular Activities List? All right. Motion by Ms. Davis, is there a second? Second by Dr. Dahl, is there any discussion? I just want to say I'm excited about it. I think it's a rigorous expectation, and I really applaud the effort to get our students in the community and performing in the arts, and that we're including dance in that. I think that's a wise move, and I'm just so blown away every year by the talent of our students, and I just think it's a great idea. So I'm glad the State Board thought of this. All right.
And I just want to say the same thing, just to reiterate, I think this is a great opportunity for kids, and a question that popped up, I assume this is- And question that popped up, I assume this is just discussed like freshman year, entering freshman year with counselors? Is that, how do they go about finding out?
We definitely will, as they move, the eighth grade, they go down, we'll make sure they're aware there. The counselor will then keep them in mind as well as those arts teachers. Remember, they're very passionate about their students. So if I'm in visual arts, I can assure you Ellen Duncan at Pinecrest is going to make sure I know all about it and I start my log as a freshman. But remember, as we talked about, we're able to give it to seniors this year. So they've been working with students to backlog because we can backlog last year and this year so that we're able to give this endorsement this year.
Gotcha, great, thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I just want to point out that, you know, the fine and performing arts is just so important and, you know, we have students that choose to go down that path, but everyone's exposed to it to some degree. I do want to point out, and I want to thank the taxpayers of Moore County for paying for this because 10 years or so ago during the big budget crisis, Raleigh cut funding for elementary and primary school, elementary and middle school, fine and performing arts. So this program is paid for by the Moore County taxpayers. The state does not give us money for K through eight performing and fine arts and I just want to thank the taxpayers and it's well worth their investment. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor to approve the Arts Education Proficiency Diploma Endorsement Extracurricular Activities List, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. All right, now we're at item C. Request for Proposals, Real Estate Firm Agent Services. And could we hear a little bit about it first before we have a motion?
Well, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
This comes as a result of the feedback the Board received at the public hearing and then the debriefing that we then did of that feedback at the Board's Construction Committee meeting on February 4th. I'd like to turn it over to the Construction Committee Chair, Mr. Hensley, if he wants to say anything to introduce this topic. Of course, Ms. Purvis is prepared to review what the RFP is and what we're seeking.
Yeah, so this comes with my full recommendation for approval and the committee recommendation for approval. A couple highlights of it. First is there's seven evaluation criteria for people who apply, one of which is knowledge of the local market, you know, their local agent. Probably a very exciting part of it is if you read it, the period of performance starts eight April. So, you know, assuming we approve this and we get the responses back and everything goes according to plan, on eight April, we'll be taking our first step in the journey to build a replacement for Carthage Elementary School. And that's exciting, which leads me to the next thing. You'll see this in the next work session in my committee report, but we're going to do concurrent processing within the limitations of our bandwidth. You know, we get this going and we get it going, we get Realtors going here, then we're going to move to our next project and then we're going to get it going. And then once we get that down the road, then we're going to start with our next project. So we're going to do concurrent planning and execution of all these projects. So I'm excited, this is the first long overdue step of getting our construction back on track. So again, comes with the committee and my recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Ms. Purvis, anything you want to add?
I'll just give us a short overview that the feedback we received at our public hearing on February 3rd as well as all of the information that we received in our online portal overwhelmingly supported the recommendation for a new Carthage Elementary on a new site with a core capacity of 600, which led us to this recommendation today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the? Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair, you don't need a motion, this is the recommendation of the committee. So.
Oh, we just have to vote on it?
It could just be presented as a recommendation.
That makes it easy.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the recommendation from the Construction Committee, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Awesome. Tell them a little excited about that. All right, we're at item seven, Superintendent's Report. At this time, Dr. Locklear, do you have anything to share with us?
Just a couple brief comments, Madam Chair. I appreciate Vice Chair Davis noting and remembering Nora McNeil, a legendary educator here in Moore County, serving our county for 38 years as an educator, as a teacher and assistant principal, and principal at Santa's Farm Life for 25 years. Absolutely unheard of. I know there's a lot of people in this room, she had an incredible impact on them as educators, on their children. And I had the distinct pleasure of working with Nora when I came back to Moore County Schools before her retirement in 2020 and she's going to be deeply missed, but I just continue to keep her family in our thoughts and our prayers. I also want to share a couple congratulations. We had our second annual Spelling Bee last week and it was quite the competition. I think it was 37 rounds, Ms. Gephardt? 37 rounds. And our kids did an incredible job, but the winner was from Southern Middle School. So the dragons were victorious in the Spelling Bee competition. So we're proud of all those kids. Yes, sir.
Do we know what the word was?
Ms. Gephardt?
Hang on, it's not a tickle, but it was ringling, ringling.
Wow. I will never be participating in it. I don't want to, that's not my forte. Also, another congratulations I want to share out is from Viking country. Our Union Pines High School wrestling team won the 3A state championships over the weekend. So we're awfully proud of the Vikings and our students continue to do incredible things. So as we're rounding down the winter sports season with playoffs and championships, we're already spring sports starting this week. So off and running and before long you'll start seeing notification of spring musicals from our theater department. So lots going on and awfully proud of our students and our staff. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you so much. At this point, it takes us to section eight, Board Comments. And Mr. Benway, if you'll start tonight, please, sir.
No comment, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bruno, any comments?
Dr. Locklear stole my thunder because I wanted to congratulate the Union Pines Boys Wrestling Team. Go Vikings. Also, this is a little late, but Ainsley Tri-Hane from Union Pines High School and she's also the Key Club Treasurer. She raised money for the Joint Special Operations Association. So I really want to take my hat off to Ainsley. Her dad is in the military and I think that what she did was absolutely outstanding. And Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Thank you. Dr. Dahl?
I had the privilege today to visit two of our elementary schools and that was pretty special for me. The first one I went to was Carthage Elementary School and most of us remember last week, four teachers from Carthage Elementary gave us a very effective joint presentation. And they really seemed like terrific people and everything I saw at the school today was in keeping with that. You know, they are, they are, I could say they're doing the best they can with the school that needs to be replaced, but they're really doing an amazing job over there. And I saw happy, engaged students and I saw challenging lessons and I saw, you know, just enthusiasm and community. And I can't wait to see what they do when we give them a shiny new school. And I also got to visit Cameron Elementary and that was kind of special to me because the principal there was my colleague when I first began teaching at Northmore. And it's really cool to see all the ways in which he has grown and integrated himself into that school and his ideas for where the school is going, that's Jared Cassidy. So that was a real treat for me to visit both those two schools.
Thank you. Mr. Hensley? Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Well, the three things I was going to talk about, Tim already talked about, which is fine, obviously, congrats to Colby out at Southern Middle School. I'm a fellow Spelling Bee nerd back in the day. I also want to give a shout out to Esther who placed second place. She now has a word she will never forget for the rest of her life. I don't know what it is, but she's got that. Also, Union Pines Wrestling, great state championship, love that. Coach Brian Gray out there, congratulations to that whole team. I assume we'll see them at some point up here, which is fantastic. And lastly, just also reiterate about Nora McNeil, a true legend in Moore County Schools. She was a fantastic person and a mentor to a lot of people in this county. Just a quick little story about Nora. Back when we started the robotics back in 2015, we were looking for a place to host our first robotics competition and Nora had no idea about robotics or program or coding, but she knew about engagement and kids' passions. And so she was the first host site for our Moore County Schools robotics event. So, yeah, shout out to Nora McNeil and to her family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Davis. Okay.
All right, I'll conclude tonight. I want to thank our board members and our staff for a great meeting and very productive. I want to again congratulate our employees and students who were recognized tonight and thank you for serving our students with quality and dedication. Thank you to our student leaders for leading us in the pledge and inspiring us tonight. Last week's public hearing was very valuable to us serving the community and we appreciate everyone who participated. We look forward to the next steps toward providing a new building for Carthage Elementary through the RFP process to secure a Realtor. It was School Counselor Week last week and we're so grateful for the incredible work of our school counselors to support our students. And I did get to go to that Spelling Bee and it was amazing and those words were rigorous and tough. I'm so proud of Colby from Southern Middle and Esther from Cranes Creek Middle for their final showdown rounds. Colby will represent Moore County at the regional competition on March the 9th. I want to say thank you to Principal Julie McPherson and Sand Hills Farm Life for inviting me to read the trivia question for their book about a mouse on a motorcycle. I got to visit Kim Brown's kindergarten class today at Southern Pines Elementary as the mystery reader. And so that was a lot of fun, working with kindergarten students. And finally, in remembrance of Nora McNeil, our friend and colleague who served our district for 38 years. Sorry. I want to share her simple phrase that we can all live by. Nora always said, "To love the children." Love the children. Thank you for being here tonight. So I guess I'm going to cry. This is my first one crying, I hope it, you take it with passion. But seeing no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All right, is there a second? All right, all those in favor say aye. Thank you for being here tonight. Meeting's adjourned.